...visions of four candidates running for city council positions one and two. Our candidates for position number one are Chuck Duffy and Eric Sten. Candidates for position number two are Jim Franciscone and Gail Shipley. This program today will have several sections. First, each candidate will give a three-minute opening statement. Coin tosses held last week determine the order of appearance in this debate. In all sections of this debate, we will hear first from candidates for position one. Following the opening statements, candidates will respond to questions from our City Club panel down in the front here. Our questioners today are Stephen Burdick, Vice President for Property Development, Key Property Services, and Member of the Program Committee. Also with him is Sandy Marin, Administrator of Business Services for the Oregon Nurses Association, and also a Member of the Program Committee. Questions were submitted in advance, in a meeting, and by writing by members of the City Club. The questions will be directed to specific candidates and will be asked in about 15 seconds. Candidates then have one minute to respond. The candidates have not seen these questions in advance. These are the only questions that will be asked today. There will be no questions from the floor. Our timekeeper, Alan Shipley, Special Accounts Manager for RAS Transportation, is seated with our panelists and will time both the questions and the responses. Thank you, Alan. Following the questions from our City Club panel, each candidate will ask two questions of his or her opponent. We will begin each round with cross-questions from candidates running for position one first, and then we'll follow with cross-questions from candidates running for position two. Questions in that round will be asked in 30 seconds. Responses will be one minute, and the questioner will have 30 seconds for an optional rebuttal. Following this series of cross-questions among the candidates, each candidate then will have two minutes for a closing statement. This meeting is governed by the program format that I have just described and by the rules of conduct which are on your tables. In consideration of our radio audience today, and our time, and our candidates, we ask that you refrain from any applause, or verbal remarks, or sound during this debate. This program will adjourn at 1:15 PM. And now, a very brief introduction of our candidates. For position one, in alphabetical order, Jim Franciscone. Mr. Franciscone is a Portland attorney. He is co-founder of Youth Employment and Empowerment Coalition, which has placed nearly 550 gang-involved youth in jobs with more than 150 private-sector employers. He was also chairman of the Oregon Juvenile Justice Commission. His opponent is Gail Shipley. Ms. Shipley is the Traffic Safety Program Manager for the City of Portland. She was appointed to the Oregon State House of Representatives in 1991, and won two more terms. She was appointed to the Governor's DUII Advisory Commission, and is a founding member of the Breast and Cervical Cancer Coalition Board. In position two, in alphabetical order, Chuck Duffy is an attorney in private practice. He is a former assistant to Portland Mayor Bud Clark. Mr. Duffy is a founding member of the Oregon Cultural Heritage Commission, and has served on both his neighborhood association and the Cathedral School as board member and president. His opponent, Eric Sten, is Chief of Staff to Portland City Commissioner Gretchen Kofory. He is also the recipient of the 1995 State of Oregon Department of Housing and Community Development Excellence in Housing Award, and also the recipient of the Ma Curtis Award for Social Justice. He is also a leading organizer of the Albina Community Bank. Welcome, all. Now, I ask each of the candidates to approach their podiums, take their places, and we will begin with opening statements. We will begin with an opening statement from Jim Franciscone, candidate for position one, followed by Gail Shipley, his opponent for position one. After Gail is finished, we will have the opening statements from candidates for position two. Chuck Duffy first, followed by Eric Sten.
Thank you for clarifying that I'm running for position number one. For a minute, I thought that for the past year and a half, I'd been running for the wrong job. Thank you also for the opportunity to be here. You're a special group because you volunteer your time and your talents to help keep this city and this state special. It's been a privilege for me to be here with these other good candidates, and to be running against Representative Shipley for position number one. It will be a particular honor to succeed Mike Lindbergh, who's been a crucial part of this city and of the council for a very long time. I wish you could all have experienced the experience I've had this past year and a half, seeing our city through the eyes of our citizens. This city is proof that urban life in America works. Schools are the hearts of our neighborhood. Neighborhoods are the heart of our city, and these neighborhoods revolve around a vital downtown in an environment that nourishes and sustains us. I am running for the city council for the same reasons that you work here at the City Club. I love this city. I have a desire to serve it, and I want to be part of a team that preserves this special place. And there is one more reason. From the 20 years that I have worked in neighborhoods across this city, there are people and there are neighborhoods that have not been included in the specialness that is Portland. We need to include everyone for us to be the kind of city that you want us to be. Our city faces enormous challenges as we approach the 21st century. First, we're in danger of losing our public school system, which is the single most important ingredient to keeping working families in the city. Second, we're in danger of losing more and more of our young people, not just from northeast Portland, but across the city, to gangs and drugs and crime. We have other enormous challenges. Housing is rapidly becoming unaffordable, especially for seniors, the poor, and first-term homebuyers. Population growth threatens our air, our water, our rivers, our streams, and our neighborhoods. Most of the job growth is in the suburbs. Yet my 20 years of neighborhoods in this campaign have given me much hope. People love this city, and they're already fighting to protect it. Parents at schools, citizens on foot patrols, activists cleaning up streams and neighborhoods. I've been honored to receive a variety of endorsements, from the police to the Rainbow Coalition, from the Secretary of State to Mike Schrunk. The reason is not just for what I have done, but that I am trying to bring a different kind of leadership. A leadership that brings coalitions between government and business to do difficult things like the Youth Employment and Empowerment Coalition. A leadership that provides a vision that we all have a responsibility, we all have an obligation, to keep this a special city, and to include people that have not been included. I ask for your vote.
Gail?
Thanks, Greg. It really is an honor to be here with you again. This is my third appearance before the Portland City Club. Portland is a great city, and our commitment to preserving its unbeatable quality of life is the key reason why. It's also why I'm the clear choice for this city council seat. I've got the passion, the leadership, and the experience to protect and improve the quality of life for every person in Portland. As it is, we are losing jobs to the suburbs. Traffic is bad and getting worse, and our air and water quality is threatened. Housing prices are going through the proverbial roof. Our schools are hurting. In short, we're getting all the burdens of growth without enjoying all the benefits. Quality of life is founded on economic hope and the living wage jobs that are a part of it. As a native Oregonian, I know that our livability depends on both a healthy, livable economy and a healthy, livable environment. And I have a proven record for making a positive difference on the issues critical to our quality of life: public safety, public schools, a clean environment, and managing growth. As a state representative, I helped pass the Tough on Crime Act to make sure that people who commit property crimes get more than just a slap on the wrist. Tough sanctions help make prevention and intervention efforts succeed so we can all be safer. Governor Kitzaberg's new kicker plan is fundamentally the Quality Education Act I wrote a year and a half ago, with all House Democrats joining as cosponsors. Here in Portland, I helped create Slow Down for Kids' Sake, working with police, and teachers, parents, and neighbors to make our streets safer for our children, especially near parks and schools. It's not just getting results, though. It's how you get them. Slow Down for Kids' Sake worked, not just because it's a good idea, but because I brought people into a meaningful process, built lasting coalitions, and built consensus. To be effective in this city, you can't afford to burn bridges. You have to know how to lead and how to manage. I'll use my city management expertise and my years of Portland small-business experience to make sure our programs are managed effectively and cost-effectively. I'm proud that so many business owners and managers from all over the city support me. But I'm also proud that every environmental organization weighing in on this race endorses me also. Because I know that Portland can rise to the incredible challenges we face. A hundred years from now, as Portlanders celebrate the 200th birthday of the symphony, they also will know of our commitment to this great city and its unbeatable quality of life. Let's work together now to make that future a reality.
For the benefit of our radio audience, we now hear from candidates for position two, beginning with Chuck Duffy.
In any important election, the question is always how to frame the choice. Today, I want to suggest that you ask yourself, who has the experience and the independence to be sure that we are all at the table as Portland moves into the next century? Portland belongs to all of us. We're optimistic. We enjoy a high level of civic participation. We're connected to Portland in a very personal way because we've been involved in creating it. Now, with a huge influx of citizens, Portland is experiencing economic stability. We have a plan to clean up the Willamette River, build an extensive light-rail system, and fully-staffed community policing. But growth also brings pressures. Where will we house thousands of new Portlanders? How will we provide jobs and education facilities? Who will make these decisions, and will they be made in a way that preserves what is special? Right now, Portland is on the cusp of this dilemma. We're worried that increasing density might adversely change our neighborhoods. Huge civic infrastructure projects might cost more than people can afford, and not all of the answers are at City Hall. I will listen the way I learned to listen when I worked for Mayor Bud Clark. People all over Portland have good ideas. We must bring them together because when we do that, we all benefit. We get better ideas. We empower more people, and we enrich our own lives. And we preserve what is great about this city. I agree with the Oregonian that it is imperative that the city council protect the citizen participation process during this time of dynamic change. I understand citizen participation because I've been on the other side. As a longtime civic activist, I know how intimidating it can be to question City Hall or stick up for a minority position. It takes grit, passion, and a determination to make a difference. I can and I will provide an independent voice for the citizens of Portland. Our challenge is to manage growth, not let growth drive us. Creating 70,000 more housing units by the year 2040 won't be worth it if we destroy what we love about this city to get it done. To accommodate increased density, citizens must have confidence that they will be at the table when the decisions are made. I will make sure that they are. No favorites and no scapegoats, just equals working together to get the job done. I will also sharpen my pencil when I review tax and fee proposals. City government must remain true to its mission. Reserves must be saved during the good times so that when the bad times come, necessary services will continue. We share a special bond in Portland that allows us to lead the way when it comes to preserving community while achieving far-reaching goals. I will bring experience and independence to the council to help preserve that bond. Thank you.
Also running for position two, Eric Sten.
Thank you. Portland has done very well over the last 20 years. We've built a beautiful downtown. We've started on a light-rail system that should be the country's best. The economy's booming. Unemployment is at 4% right now in Portland. You can't do any better than that. Crime, for the first time in history, maybe not history, but my history, has decreased this year. Since the turbulent times of the 1980s, when we had lots of problems with the police and the community was wondering what was going to happen next, Chief Moose has taken charge, and community policing is working. The crime rate is down. Times are good in Portland. That's the good news. Now, for the bad. In the last five years, housing prices have doubled. The people I grew up with cannot afford to buy a home in the city they love. The river is dirty. I used to swim in it. I thought it was okay. And now, I guess maybe that's why I'm short or something. But we've got to clean up the river. We know there's some problems there. And probably most importantly of all, the school system is on the ropes. And we can talk about all sorts of problems today, but if we lay off 200 more teachers next year, forget it. We've got to do something about that. For the last five years, I've worked for Gretchen Kofory at the City of Portland, and I've learned a lot. I started the year that Measure Five passed. And so what I've seen is how can you get things done with less money, with more constraints? How are you creative to work on these neighborhood problems that we see today? I want to give you a couple of examples, because what I see in Portland is fantastic civic spirit. I think as you hear the candidates talk today, there's probably not a lot of disagreement about what the issues are. I want to give you some specific ideas on how we can fix things. Couple stories. In 1991, there was a somewhat notorious slumlord that went bankrupt in northeast Portland named Dominion Capital. They had 352 homes, and 100 have been sold on contracts, 250 were rentals. I had just started working for Gretchen, and she asked me, could we do something about this problem? I worked with community leaders, and we came up with a great idea to start a nonprofit and buy these homes away. The city's response is, we don't have enough cash to do this. And our response from the community, and we actually worked with Bill Swindell, who was at US Bank at the time, was to put together an $11 million line of credit and to have US Bank finance buying the homes. We didn't need the government money, but we needed some know-how, and we needed a little more attention to the neighborhoods. In the same vein, I've worked with many people over the last five years to open a bank in northeast Portland called Albina Community Bank that will focus on small-business lending and use private-sector dollars to try and change some long-term problems. It's a new idea, and the city played a role in it, but it wasn't us stepping out and saying we could fix it. Unlike downtown, to do work in the neighborhoods, we have to come up with some new ideas. The final one I want to talk about is the Belmont Dairy. On southeast 30th and Belmont, there's a vacant piece of land that had been decrepit for years. If we don't want to sprawl, if we want to protect the environment and hold the urban growth boundary, we can't leave two blocks sitting on southeast Belmont, the busiest transit line in the city. We couldn't do it. It took too long. It was too hard to figure out. I worked with the government, with private-sector developers, and the thing's going to open next week. It's fully leased. It's a new model. If we repeat that over and over, and most importantly, if we repeat that throughout the region, and begin to get partners throughout the suburbs working with us instead of fighting against us, I think we can turn these things around. Thank you.
Thank you all for your opening statements. Now, we move to the portion of the program which consists of questions from our panel at the front of the room here. I turn the program over to our panelists, Sandy Marin and Steve Burdick. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question, and the first question comes from Steve Burdick. Steve?
My first question is for Mr. Franciscone. As a partner in Metro's goal to preserve the urban growth boundary, Portland has committed to add 70,000 new housing units within its city limits, which require increased densities in most neighborhoods. Should every neighborhood be expected to accept its fair share of increased density, or should certain neighborhoods be exempt?
We need to hold the urban growth boundary. That's one of the things that keeps Portland special. But to do that, we also need to maintain the quality of life in our neighborhoods that Chuck talked about. Every neighborhood is going to have to accept increasing densities. Now, that's easy to say. That also means we need to make sure that there's the transportation to support it. One of the things I really learned about during this campaign was southwest Portland and the lack of bus service in southwest Portland. So if we're talking about increasing 7,000 units, which we're talking about in southwest Portland, we need to make sure that there's transportation. I'm a big supporter of north-south light rail, but we need more flexible bus routes. We need smaller bus routes, or else we're never going to get to those densities. And we also need to involve citizens in the process of seeing how their neighborhoods will look. We need a few less planners and a few more architects in neighborhood meetings, helping citizens feel like what their neighborhoods will look like. And yes, we need rental accessory units across the city, granny flats.
Gail, Portland's combined sewer system must be repaired and modernized to reduce sewage and stormwater spills into our rivers and streams, but the price tag is prohibited. How would you get the job done and keep the cost down?
There's a way to do both, because we have to do both. Keeping our river dirty with bacterial pollution or any other type of pollution is not an option. We can do both if we focus on actual water quality outcomes, not on technological fixes. What are we doing to actually keep the river clean and to clean it up? The City of Portland currently has a discount program for low-income households. Only about a third of the eligible households take advantage of that. So first of all, we can use the tools that we have, and people need to be aware of that. They should call 823-7770. That's number one. Number two, we can also use the utility franchise fee money, cut it, as the Public Utility Review Board has suggested, cut it, and use it for two purposes. One is transportation infrastructure, and the other is for targeted rate relief so that we don't price people out of their homes.
My next question is for Mr. Duffy. Let's confront the issue of the Fire Bureau. It has a notorious reputation for being a political hot potato for every city commissioner it's been assigned to, and it has a dismal record for not recruiting and hiring a more diverse workforce. If the Fire Bureau were assigned to you, how would you improve its performance?
First thing I'd like to say is I'm proud of the work of the men and women of the Portland Fire Bureau. I think they do a good job. I think that what we have to do in dealing with those issues is dealing with all our personnel policies. They need to understand what the expectations are of the city. They need to know the direction the city is going. I think they do know that. I think the key to it is to work with it in a way that brings the sides together and not be adversarial. We had a lot of disagreements when I was in the mayor's office with the Police Bureau. And today, 10 years later, I think the Police Bureau is an outstanding example of the work that the city can do. And I think that the task with the Fire Bureau will be no more difficult. I believe that there is leadership in that bureau that has good faith and is willing to work on those issues. And I think that if they're presented with good faith, and if people come to the table in an honest and straightforward manner, we can solve that problem, and we will.
The next question is for Eric Sten. Eric, it seems that one of the biggest challenges facing our city is accommodating growth while maintaining Portland's quality of life. Can we have both increased density and livability? If so, how?
I think we have to. And to say that we can't would be to say that there's better livability in the communities that have sprawled, Los Angeles and places that haven't built more densely. If you read the Oregonian in August, Chief Moose wrote an article that said that the way to make a safer neighborhood is through higher density that's well-designed. And so I think the issue is not, are we more dense or less dense? I think we're looking at the wrong place. It's how well do we design whatever density we have? If you look throughout the city, there's places in Portland where there are very low-density developments going in, and they're ruining the neighborhoods, you know, the kind with the garage in front, and it keeps people away from their neighbors. There's also very high-density developments that are improving neighborhoods, like the work that's going on by Lloyd Center, if you see the new apartments going in. So the issue is, how do we build on transit lines? How do we build new types of units? And how do we build spaces that are open to the whole community? And so I think we should focus on design rather than density, and I think that will solve our problem. But it's a lot of work, and it's got to be done block by block, like the projects I was mentioning in the opening.
Mr. Franciscone, again. Strategies to reduce drug use have clearly failed, since statistics indicate that drug use is increasing at alarming rate. What would you, as a city commissioner, advocate to try to reverse this trend?
It's an important question. You know, it's a big issue in the presidential election now, and folks, at the local level, we have much more of an opportunity to address it than at the federal level. It does relate to the schools. That's an important reason why our schools need to be strong. It also relates to the city's role in terms of after-school programs and after-school activities. Folks, David Douglas does a better job than Portland Public Schools of using our facilities from 6:00 in the morning until 6:00 at night. 70% of our young people go home to nobody at home at 3:00. That is the period of drug use, many of it. We need positive alternatives for our young people. The best way to reduce crime is also that. The highest period of juvenile crime is from 3:00 to 6:00. We need homework centers so kids have something constructive to do. We need art classes. We need parents and volunteers from our senior centers, creating intergenerational opportunities. Some of these young people don't think they're going to live past the age of 25. Having them with our seniors will help a tremendous amount.
The next question is for Gail Shipley. Gail, high-speed rail advocates want to invest millions of state and federal dollars in a rail system between Portland and Eugene. Given all the investments required for an effective transportation system, what priority would you assign to high-speed rail, and why?
Well, as a legislator, I assign very high priority to high-speed rail. In fact, it's disappointing, to say the least, that the State of Oregon is not bailing up to the bar and plunking some money down as the State of Washington has, because in fact, high-speed rail is not just between Eugene and Portland, it's between Eugene and Vancouver, B.C. So we all need to be players in that. The City of Portland needs to be making sure that the State of Oregon and the federal government understands that this is a top priority. As a legislator, I can't tell you how nice it would have been to hop into a high-speed rail car and go down to Salem every day instead of getting in my car and driving 55 miles one-way every single day. So we've got to do that. An awful lot comes from the bully pulpit, understanding how it all fits together and providing transportation choices for people. The air and water quality that I mentioned earlier that's threatened is not going to be improved unless we get people out of their cars and provide choices for them.
Mr. Duffy, almost half of Portland's 9% hotel-motel tax pays for tourism-related facilities like the convention center. If the hotel-motel tax were increased, should new revenues be used for tourism or for other purposes?
I think that when the hotel-motel tax is looked at, it needs to be focused on what the hotel-motel industry is going to get from that. And so I think the tourism is the aspect where it goes. But I think we need to take a look at the whole issue of whether there's niche taxes being funded for services and benefits to the broad community. I'm not in favor of using niche taxes for things that everybody should pay for. But I think that I would focus it on tourism. I think we have to address the division. If we're going to look at that, we have to address the division in the hotel-motel industry between the outlying hotels and the hotels' local inns, such as if we're addressing issues to the Performing Arts Center and cultural tourism, because they are divided along that. And we have to figure out a way that'll make it work for the entire industry, or we're going to have opposition on that, as we've had in the past.
The next question's for Eric Sten. Eric, one of the late Tom McCall's most important accomplishments was the cleanup of the Willamette River. Now, the discovery of deformed and diseased fish and wildlife in the Willamette is raising new concerns about river contamination. What should be done to restore the Willamette?
Well, the first thing we've got to do is make sure everyone in Portland makes it a priority, because it's going to be very expensive, and if we don't get people bought in, they're not going to pay for it. And the interesting thing is, kids get this. I was at a fifth-grade class on Monday, and I asked them, took a vote on what was their biggest priorities, and they said, schools and the river. And they were even willing to give up a Nintendo game a year to clean up the river. And if the kids can do that, I think the city's going to have to as well. But quickly, we don't have a lot of time. We have to, we're going to have to be very creative and far-reaching in how to do this. I think we have to look at more conservation. I think we're going to have to consider our pricing structures and whether or not they're truly too regressive, meaning the people who can't afford to pay for it are paying too much. I think we also need to push hard with Metro and the region to find a way to clean up the rivers that run into the Willamette, and to think about financing some of these things as a region, because we all share the river.
Mr. Franciscone, the Rose Festival Fund Center at the Waterfront Park has been controversial for years. It seems to attract crime, it tears up the waterfront park, and it causes disruption, congestion, and loss of business downtown. Why does the city continue to support it?
I don't know. I haven't asked anybody at the city. And actually, I've had over 80 house parties and thousands of questions, and this is the first one that's come up. Here's the way that I would respond, so you get a little way of how I think. I do think it's good that we have gathering places and meeting places. One of the reasons we need to maintain the downtown is it's everybody's neighborhood. And so places like that, gatherings like that, we need to have. Now, what I don't know is the cost and the detriment, and how much economically it is hurting businesses. You would hope you can construct it in a way that it actually supports businesses. I would hope that this might be an opportunity to get some of our young people, who are doing many good things in our community, involved in the policing of it, with an honest discussion that, listen, folks, we're not going to have this anymore unless we can get your help and cooperation. So that would be one approach, in addition to the citizen guides and the work of the Portland police.
Gail, here's a ballot measure test. Of all the measures on the November ballot, pick two that, in your opinion, are the most harmful to all Oregonians, and explain your choices.
Okay. Boy, there's so many, because there are 23 more than ever before in the history of the State of Oregon we will be voting on. Has anybody gotten their voter's pamphlets? Okay, there'll be a quiz here. All right. In fact, somebody asked me a question similar to that, but they turned it around. They said, are there any that you would vote for? And actually, there were. I think there were five that I would vote for. One is an easy one, Measure 47, which is the so-called "cut and cap" one. Someone was sporting a pin the other day that said, circumcise more. I'm not sure I want to get that close myself, but the reality is that that will have far-reaching implications completely unforeseen for decades to come. to come. So, Measure 47 is number one. The other one, frankly, is Measure 46, which is just above that. That's the "Who says dead men can't vote" measure, another really bad one. And the only thing worse than Measure 47 passing is if Measure 46 and Measure 47 passes.
Mr. Duffy. Even before last February's floods, OMSI was in serious financial difficulty. How, in your opinion, did OMSI get into such trouble, and what, if anything, should be done by the city to help out?
I didn't come here today to place blame on what's wrong with OMSI. I can guarantee you that, and I'm not going to do that. Let me talk about OMSI for a second. I think that there's a myriad of issues of where OMSI, myriad of reasons why OMSI got to where it is today. Question is, what are we going to do about it? OMSI is very important. I was there last Sunday, by the way. I took my boys there, and we went around and looked through it again, and it is really a wonderful place. I enjoyed it very much. I thought about that the other day. I was thinking after that, I thought, "What can we do about this?" And I think that perhaps the council needs to designate a council member as a liaison to a number of these organizations, the Oregon Historical Society. We get great benefits from OMSI. We get great benefits from OHS. We get great benefits from many of these organizations. And we should designate one person that will work specifically with these organizations to find out what we can do to help, how we can make it better for them and for us, because it's not just giving to them. We're not just giving to them, we're in a partnership with them. And we need to make sure that we support them for all that they give us. I'd like to be that person, because I'm a member of many of those organizations, and I'd like to see them succeed.
Eric, let's put you into a real-world city council position. The city needs a new community center, but the particular neighborhood where it is to be located strongly objects. What weight should neighborhood concerns be given in an issue that is of importance to the city as a whole?
A very large position. There's no easy answer to this without the specifics. But I think what we can do is make sure that the neighborhoods are involved from the very beginning. In the case of the parks bond and the community centers, perhaps we could have started even more early with, when the bond was passed, talking with the neighborhoods about what the fiscal constraints were going to be if this passed and what that would do for possible places to cite them. At that point, then, I think you can bring in the folks, you can do meetings as you go out. Some programs have been successful, to hire people from the neighborhood to actually go door-to-door. And so, I think it's very important. Ultimately, on these issues, it's going to come to the city council, and there's going to have to be a tough choice made. It's one thing to listen to citizen input, which is very, very important. At this point, of any of the community centers that I know about, there's strong disagreement on both sides. And at some point, the city council is going to have to say, "We've listened to both sides, and this is the decision that we're going to make." And so, I think what you do is spend your own time, your staff's time, try and build processes that work, and then at some point, you've got to make a decision. And it's interesting how controversial particularly the community centers are. You'd think that would be easy.
Thank you. We'd like to move ahead to the next portion of today's program, and that is that each candidate will ask two questions of his or her opponent. Again, in each round, we will begin with questions for candidates for position number one, followed by questions from candidates for position number two. Questions must be asked in 30 seconds. Candidates will have one minute to respond, after which the questioner will have an optional 30-second rebuttal. For the sake of allowing candidates maximum response time, we remind you to please hold your applause until the end of this. We begin with candidate for position number one, Jim Franciscone. Mr. Franciscone, your first question of Ms. Shibley.
The crime rate may be down, but seniors in Lantz and community centers across the city don't know it. The crime rate may be down, but people who are afraid to use Trimate don't know it. Crime rate may be down, but businesses in part of our city that don't get business don't know it. Representative Shibley, as a member of city council, what past experience will you bring to ensure a safe environment for citizens, and what have you done to reduce crime in our neighborhoods?
Great. As you point out, crime is very important. In fact, I've been working on crime here in Portland and around the state for the last half a decade as a member of the Juvenile Justice Task Force, as a co-author of the Tough on Crime Act that I mentioned. I have a long record in the legislature on protecting our public safety. But frankly, being tough on crime is only one element of our public safety. Both punishment and prevention are important. That's why we have to also support alternative sentencing, alternative dispute resolution, parenting education, drug and alcohol treatment, and a whole host of things, so that while we're tough on crime, yes, we're also helping prevent the crime and intervene early so that those crime statistics aren't as high as they otherwise would be.
Thank you. The question I've kind of focused on, you can judge us in some degree by what we've done. And as a volunteer in the past, I've chaired the State Juvenile Justice Commission. But more importantly, I've worked in neighborhoods on the root causes of crime. As a volunteer, I've not only closed down a drug house, but helped craft the City Ride Drug House Ordinance, which now is being expanded to try to deal with adult bookstores. I've helped found a coalition that I'm very proud of with leadership from Lorenzo Poe and Tony Hobson, the Youth Employment and Empowerment Coalition, which really has placed 600 gang-affected youth with 200 businesses.
Ms. Shibley, your first question of Mr. Franciscone.
Thanks, Greg. Regardless of specific bureau assignments, the city council's biggest challenge over the next four years is going to be how do we manage growth? Tell me what practical experience you've had in land-use planning, environmental policy, transportation planning, or other issues that will allow you to address this issue effectively as a leader on the council.
As a past citizen in the state, I have concentrated on running my business and, as a volunteer, dealing with the issue of crime and how to get our young people into the life of the city. I do believe it is important to have a land-use background and a training background, although I do believe bringing some fresh perspective, this is good, too. That's why during this campaign, I have consciously identified leading land-use people and citizens from a variety of perspectives to help educate me, because this is an area that I have a lot to learn in.
We all know that meaningful participation by the stakeholders in any land-use process is absolutely essential to making sure that we make smart decisions that we can all live with. But the city council has to be a leader. That's why you have to know what you're doing. I have the experience and the public record that proves I'm the kind of leader that we need on city council. According to Charlie Swindells, who recently completed a tally of bills affecting land use and growth management, quote, "Gail Shibley had the very best voting record on land use of any member of the House or Senate. That program is one of Oregon's best tools to ensure urban livability."
We now move to questions from candidates for position number two. Mr. Duffy, your first question of Mr. Sten.
Mr. Sten, as a Portland employee and as a board member of a development organization, you helped to arrange for the developer to build on John's Wood Park before it had been declared surplus, before it had been rezoned, and without any public bid process. Do you think that this is good public process?
I think it's good negative campaigning, the way you described that. For those of you who haven't followed that, there's a piece of land that the city owns in North Portland called John's Wood Park. It's a piece of land that had housing for 30 years on it, up until 30 years ago. The housing was flooded. A few years ago, a group I work with named Host that works on building affordable housing for citizens in Portland decided to ask the city if it would be possible to build affordable housing on that land. The Neighborhood Association supported it, and Host moved forward and tried to build this housing. Recently, as neighbors realized that some vacant land was going to have housing put on it, a controversy erupted. This happens every single time we try and put density into the city of Portland. It happens every single time we try to build affordable housing. At the very first meeting, before the facts were out, Chuck, you said, "It shouldn't be homeownership a street at a time. It shouldn't be homeownership a park at a time, it should be homeownership a street at a time." That was knee-jerk, it was quick. The city council voted 4-0 for this project and showed it was the right thing to do.
Please hold your applause. Mr. Duffy.
Folks, the truth is that it's a terrible public process. It's caused people to be suspect of the project, the city, and the developer. People in power must take great care to ensure that public business is done in public.
Okay, we go back to position number one. Mr. Franciscone, your second question of Ms. Shibley.
All of our Portland schools... Don't I get the cross?
Oh, I'm sorry. You have a 30-second rebuttal. Thank you.
No, I have a next check-up question.
Oh. Mr. Sten, your first question of Mr. Duffy.
Mr. Duffy, I believe the school funding crisis is the biggest problem the city faces. I think we'll lose everything we have if we let the school system go the way of other urban areas. I have publicly supported and continue to support the city helping the school district with money until we can find a long-term solution. You oppose that and call it a bailout. What is your plan to help the school district?
You have called for up to, from everywhere, from $5 to $24 million out of the Portland General Fund for schools. I disagree with that. The city of Portland has to stay within its mission. We have huge financial burdens that will be facing us, thus the reason why we have to fight Measure 47. We have huge financial problems in the city. If the city doesn't stay within its mission, the city will fail, and the whole region will fail. We must stay within our mission. Our job is to do what Mayor Katz has begun to do, which is get to the legislature, work with the legislature, get ourselves a local option, figure out how we can assume programs that the Portland School District needs to have us assume in order to help them. We need to do this on a statewide way, or it's not going to happen. I don't believe that government should try to fix one problem by creating problems somewhere else. And if we spend the kind of money that you've called for to do that, to help the Portland Public Schools, not only will they be in trouble, but the city of Portland will be in trouble. We need to stay within our mission. We can do that, and we can help the Portland Public Schools.
This is a fundamental disagreement, and it's also a case of scare tactics versus reality. The city's budget was up $18 million over last year. The school district is laying off 200 teachers. The city is not in a fiscal crisis, and children are our most important asset. We can pump money into crime, we can pump money into police, we can pump money into all sorts of things. If we continue to lay off teachers, this community is going down the drain. And we're not going to scare the legislature by saying we won't help. We're not going to scare them into action. We need to show the legislature that the schools are mean enough to us, that we're willing to sacrifice to keep them whole. That is a fundamental disagreement between the two of us.
Now, we move to the last round of cross questions. Mr. Franciscone, your second question of Ms. Shibley.
Representative Shibley, you've been in the legislature for six years. Every year, the kicker was hotly debated. Yesterday's paper, you say you need more time to study whether you support Governor Kitzhager's plan to dedicate those funds to our children's education. At the same time, you have also been calling for a reduction or elimination of the business income tax, which some want to increase for the schools. Where do you propose the money come from that our schools need?
Well, actually, Jim, I'd be happy to share with you a letter to the editor that I'm sending to the Oregonian, because as Michelle Parente can probably vouch, that conversation with her that was reported in yesterday's Oregonian, I believe, actually took place about three weeks ago before you or I or anybody else saw the specifics. And the fact is, nobody has a better record of championing public education than I do. In fact, Kitzhager's ideas, I mentioned, to invest the kicker to reduce class size is basically what I wrote in 1995 and had every single House Democratic member join with me as a co-sponsor. The fact is, now that the community is organized here locally, we need to provide state funding for schools, and that's going to happen not by pointing fingers or yelling at each other, it's going to happen by building relationships, business-to-business, school-to-school, parent-to-parent, government-to-government. Nora Paulus even says, quote, "Gail Shibley fought hard for the schools in the legislature. I'm confident she'll continue her support for children and their education as a member of the city council."
Our schools need more money now. There's not enough money in business or the city to do it, or else there's going to be a mass exodus. Now's not the time for further study. We need to support Governor Kitzhager and create the political will to have this thing happen. Even if the legislature acts, we'll have to help the schools by picking up some expenses, like the school police, after-school activities, and perhaps even the magnet program. But we have to support the governor on this quickly.
Ms. Shibley, your second and final question of Mr. Franciscone.
Thanks, Greg. In addition to being a legislator, city council members are also responsible for managing bureaus, up to 1,000 or more employees. As a legislator and city manager, my record is public, yours is not. If you have signed confidentiality agreements between you and former employees, would you be willing to waive them if your former employees agreed to do the same?
This is the point in the campaign where the offer is made to start slinging mud. I'm going to specifically decline to do that. It would not do the legacy of Mike Lindbergh any good or the city any good. In answer to your question, if we want to have a debate with employees that I've had about the past, I'm willing to do that. I have to be careful as an employer to protect the confidentiality of everybody. But let me be very clear, I'm proud of my record as an employer. I'm proud of my record as an attorney. I've represented over 11,000 working people in this city, and it has helped prepare me to be a better city commissioner.
You know, it's interesting that many people don't carefully consider the specific requirements and responsibilities for this job. On the one hand, yeah, you do have to be a good policymaker, working with a team of colleagues to make very good public policy decisions. But managing the day-to-day operations of the city is an equally important aspect of this position. I have both the legislative and the public management experience that's absolutely critical to being an effective city council member.
In position two, Mr. Duffy, your second and final question of Mr. Sten.
Mr. Sten, how can we build the housing required to increase density while at the same time protecting our parks and our open spaces?
This is the key question to protect Portland for the next 20 years. We have to set aside the green spaces, we have to set aside the places that we love and cherish and protect them. To do that and house the new residents and keep the urban growth boundary in place, which is what we've set out to do here, we're going to have to be much more creative and specific to build housing. I think there's five things we probably have to do. One is continue to invest public money in housing and new types of housing. Two is to make sure that public money leverages at least $4 or $5 to $1 with the private sector, like we have on the Belmont Dairy and other projects I've worked on. Three would be to review our regulations and make it easier to build duplexes and apartments and things that are very tough in some areas to build right now. Four is, and this is the key one, is to take the lessons we've learned region-wide and try and get the region to do the same types of innovative work that we're doing. It's probably 20 years of work, and it probably is the equivalent of rebuilding downtown, beginning in the '70s with Walsh, Goldschmidt, Katz, and everybody else.
I hear an answer that talks about housing, but not about open spaces. And what I'm trying to say, it's very simple. We have to protect our publicly open spaces, because increasing density is going to put more pressure on our parks and our playgrounds. And it's important, I think. It's very important, I think, to have balance on the council on this issue, because tunnel vision can put us, tunnel vision on this issue can put us in a very serious problem where the other major priorities of the city council, all the things that the city has to do, will not be properly dealt with. I think I bring that balance and that independence.
Mr. Sten, your second and final question today of Mr. Duffy.
Chuck, you just said I have tunnel vision and have worried about my ability to protect the environment. I've been endorsed by every single environmental organization that's made an endorsement in this race. It's based on my politics and my record, which is very current and very real. Could you answer the question you just asked me, which is specifically, how will you balance the growth and what will you do to create housing and manage growth as we move into the next century?
Well, first of all, you begin by preserving the open spaces and parks that you have, every single one of them. You don't give up one single space when you're telling the citizens of the city that we're building 70,000 new housing units, not one single parks. Queen Victoria, 150 years ago, said it's not a good idea to give up something one has. She was talking about countries. We have to hold on to these open spaces, and then we build from there. The fact is, is that under the Metro 2040 Plan, it says if you exclude all the parks and all the open spaces and all the wetlands, we have plenty of room to put 70,000 housing units in the city. So, why are we beginning with parks and designated open spaces against the will of the residents who have to live there and building housing? I say it's wrong. We need to start preserving our parks, and we build our housing from there. On the actual building of the housing, I agree completely with the plan you talk about.
Well, I think it's a good plan. There wasn't a specific piece about anything to do with growth management. What you're doing is negative campaigning. You've taken one issue that the city council voted 4-0 on a piece of surplus land to build housing, and saying, "If we continue to do that, we'll never keep our green spaces." And yet, we've still got to somehow magically reach our density requirements. These are tough issues, you have to make tough choices. There's going to be disputed pieces of land, but that was no answer.
We now move to the final portion of the program, a two-minute closing statement from each candidate, beginning with candidates for position number one, followed by candidates for position number two. for position number two. The order for closing statements in each campaign was determined by a coin toss held last week. We will begin with Jim Franciscone, followed by Gail Shibley, then proceed with candidates for position two, Eric Sten, then Chuck Duffy. Mr. Franciscone.
For the past year and a half, I've been interviewed for the job of city commissioner by several thousand of Portland citizens, on doorsteps, in kitchens, church basements, offices, and restaurants. Portlanders want three qualities in their next city commissioner. One, they want a good manager and competent administrator who can oversee a bureau. Two, they want a team player. Three, they want someone who has a vision for the city, a vision full of hope and promise, but grounded in the reality of the dawning challenges facing us as we approach the 21st century. In order to determine who best fits the job description, it's appropriate to ask, what are the differences between Representative Shibley and me? There are several. Throughout the course of this campaign, I've been the only one talking about crime. But more importantly, it's how we get our young people into the economic system instead of the justice system. Second, I'm the only one that's run a successful business for 18 years, meeting payroll all that time, having 15 employees. Third, I have a track record of building coalitions to do difficult things. Some of the things we have to do are going to be difficult. I co-founded the Youth Employment and Empowerment Coalition. If we can get jobs for gang kids, we can form the coalitions to save our schools and have after-school activities, and get housing and jobs in the city. But we need a new kind of leadership. This is the fourth difference. Community organizing has taught me that we need a leadership that believes in involving people affected by the problem in the solutions. A leadership that's focused on results, not outcomes. A leadership that builds bridges between east and rest of the river, seniors and youth, schools and business. Who's in the best position? Somebody from the outside of government, who can give a fresh perspective. Gail has spent six years in Salem and City Hall providing valuable public service, and she's to be commended and thanked for it. But I've spent 20 years in the neighborhoods, dealing with problems at the grassroots level, and be honored if you can support me.
Ms. Shibley.
Thanks. I really want to take the last couple minutes here today to talk with you directly about Portland and its future. Portland's future is at stake right now. No other city has faced the kinds of challenges that we face and come out better for it. Our future quality of life is staked on the premise that we can do things differently here. No other city has been Portland. Portlanders' values and commitment to maintaining our livability mean we have a chance to hold on to the things that make and have made and will make this city great. While our economy is booming and our population is growing at twice the national rate, we have to ensure that we protect and improve the quality of life for every person here in Portland. Strong, healthy, thriving neighborhoods are a unique and wonderful part of Portland's livability. As our neighborhoods thrive, as the people in the neighborhoods continue to be actively engaged and making decisions to help them thrive, we will know that our city as a whole is succeeding in building lasting partnerships between government and citizens. Quality of life is founded on hope. The very foundation is economic hope. It's also based on good policy, as we've seen in our statewide land use protection and our constitutional rights. Good policy and strong leadership will ensure the benefits of growth are equitably distributed. My leadership, policy experience, and city management expertise make me the best person to hold on to the unique character of our home. Portland is a great city. Together, we can keep it that way. Vote for me, November 5th.
For position number two, Mr. Sten.
It's a critical time in Portland. I started my opening today by talking about all of our successes, and I think we have a lot to be proud of, and we should cherish what we've got. I also think we don't have a lot of time to focus on these issues. I don't think we can take the chance that the schools are not funded. You've heard some distinct policy differences today, and I think some differences in style. I want to talk a little bit about the spirit I think we need in Portland to solve these problems. I've given you some specifics on how I would approach my part of helping if I'm elected to this seat. When I grew up in this town, I thought it was a town in which people came together to solve things. And what I've seen, one of the only things that disturbs me on the campaign trail, is how much we're pointing fingers and coming at each other. This hasn't been a negative campaign, but if you look at the ballot that you're going to find me on in three weeks, you've got 23 different ballot measures, with each side trying to legislate their way to what they want. What we need to do in Portland is come together and solve these problems. I bring you a lot of energy to help on that, and I bring you some expertise and some specific lessons learned from the projects I've worked on. What my campaign has done over the last 11 months is tried to energize people in Portland, and to say, "It doesn't matter what I say, although I think I've got some good ideas. We can't solve these problems unless we come together." We've had over 700 people volunteer on this campaign. We've done things to have fun, and we've taken the issues very seriously. That's the type of campaign I'm running, and that's the type of work you can expect from me. You will have lots of people, lots of input, and I think lots of new energy. It's time to focus on these issues. We don't have a lot of time to waste. I think I can help on these. I hope you'll support Eric Sten on November 5th. Thank you.
Finally, Mr. Duffy.
I'd just like to say that I asked you two questions, and on both occasions, you said I was being negative. Disagreement is not being negative, it's called democracy. There's a lot at stake for Portland on November 5th, and you'll elect two new members to the Portland City Council. I believe that I have a lot to offer: experience, passion, respect for everyone, a belief in the magic of true citizen participation, and independence. Everyone who knows me will tell you that I'm not always comfortable to be around. I care too much to go along to get along. And when I think things aren't going right, I jump right in, and I speak right up. But it isn't personal. It's about inclusion, it's about fairness, and it's about respect for the individual. I'll work hard for Portland, because we deserve no less. Without debate, issues will slide by, and we will all lose. I want us to make innovative decisions about increasing density while protecting our livability, because that's what we love about Portland. I care about public safety, because when we don't do it right, real people suffer real losses. And I believe that retired people should be able to stay in their homes as long as they want, and that young families must be able to enjoy the benefits of homeownership. I can be independent, because I have a job to return to and a family to keep me centered. I know why I want to do this, and why it's important to do it right. I ask for your support on November 5th. I will consider it a great honor and position of trust. If you will, through your votes, allow me to serve you on the Portland City Council. Thank you very much.
Please join me in thanking our candidates, memberships, and guests for turning out today. We remind you to vote. City Club of Portland is adjourned.[1771.26][1771.26]